Do we have anything else? No?
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to Nevada Community School District Board of Education, August 7th, 2023's Board Meeting. That being said, I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as placed before us tonight. All in favor? Opposed? We got a meeting. Public comment, Brian? No public comment. That gets us right into the information, 4.1, we have nothing. Let's move us right to the action agenda. 5.1, middle school curriculum purchase. Our middle school principal, Principal Tony Snyderman will be walking us through this. Thank you for coming, Tony.
Okay.
How much do you want to?
Yeah, it's, yep. Okay, so Tony and I are going to kind of joint present on, on this here. Typically with curriculum purchases that are specific to a subject, they're typically done in wide grade spans. So, for example, we came for the elementary last year, or two years ago, to discuss literacy footprints as adapting that as like a building-wide curriculum. Same thing with Bridges, which is a math program that the entire elementary uses. For grade-level curriculum transitions, we typically haven't necessarily brought it as a board action item just because it's kind of been an in-class situational change. However, with this particular purchase being over $10,000 and also impacting both 5th and 6th grade, we just thought it was appropriate to bring this to the table. Also, of course, would need the purchase to be approved again because it's above $10,000 to be able to begin implementing that. So with that, just wanted to provide to the board the current state of our literacy setup and programming for grades 5 and 6 at the middle school. So each core teacher, so one for each, math, science, social studies, and language arts teaches one section of reading. And then the other section of language arts that is taught to the students in 5th and 6th is from one core teacher, which is their language arts teacher, and that individual teaches five sections of reading. So essentially, if you're a student, you're going to have one teacher that's teaching you reading, one that's teaching you math, science, social studies, and then one that's teaching language arts. The reading teacher would be one of those four, math, science, social studies, language arts. So we have multiple teachers that are teaching specifically reading in grades 5 and 6. Writing is then from one set teacher. Everybody has writing from the same, same teacher across 5th and then also first 6th grade. There is no real set curriculum. Teachers pull from various resources to create their lessons that are then, of course, correlated to the Iowa Core. This does require a lot of time outside school hours, and then it's also developed just a little bit of inconsistency amongst classrooms and then, of course, grade levels. The kind of planning that's taking place, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically weekly, monthly planning that's taking place amongst the teachers, sometimes it might fall on one individual teacher than maybe the others. So, for example, Teacher A might say, okay, we're going to be doing this, then passes the resources, materials to the other teachers, and they kind of, kind of go with that for the week plan. The, the kind of big push then also for a curriculum program would be teaching, or teaching students learning to read as opposed to preparing them for the secondary model, which is reading to learn, which kind of makes sense between those, those two kind of differences for what we're shooting for. From a data standpoint, took a bunch of different FAST data from grades 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and then also 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. We talked about this at the board meeting in July, and I think one of the questions was, why is there so much green in grades 2, 3, and 4 over there on the right? Why are we seeing such a huge jump from the fall of '21 to the spring of '23, and then from the fall of '22 to the spring of '23? One small piece of that, we feel, has been the adoption of our Literacy Footprints curriculum program, consistency across all grade levels, consistent expectations with that. So when we're looking at that and then, you know, taking a look at some of our, our middle school data, of course, it's not all green, but there are some, some red spots. There also are some huge jumps. For example, 7th grade made a big jump with A-reading from the start of this year to the end, or the start of last school year to the end of the school year. Those grade levels don't have the consistency. 7th and 8th grade might a little bit more just because of the, the setup of having two ELA teachers at each grade level as opposed to multiple setting, setting up for instructional practices for ELA. But just kind of wanted to put this up there just to kind of get a feel for kind of where we're at data-wise. And again, this is just one small kind of piece of the puzzle with our FAST A-reading scores.
Cody, maybe if I could just add?
Absolutely.
Yes, there's green there, but it's, you know, 1%, 2%.
Right, right.
What we're trying to do is, when you like look across the 5th grade, we've got 70, 76, 77, 71, 74, 72. So we're, we're, you know, in the 70s. So we're wanting, that's, we're not okay with that. So we're trying to figure out, you know, what can we do to continue to, to beef up our instruction? And, and we feel like that next step is to get some type of consistent curriculum.
Next here is our ISAP data. So this is taken a look again. This is just ELA specifics, our English Language Arts scores. This is taking, reading is 50% of the score, and then the other 50% comes from a combination between the language and the writing score. So really, if you're looking at it, reading is 50. Language would be 25, writing would be 25. And then they take an average between those, and you get your score for proficiency standpoint. Again, this data was, was shared. Nothing has changed with this. Also, this is not official. We still haven't received anything from the state on official scores. This is just simply the number of students for 2023 that tested with us. 21, 22 would be our, our exact numbers. So, yeah, you can kind of take a look at where different grade levels have been and jumps, you know, that have, have been made. These, of course, are grade levels of last year. So when you're looking at like the 5th graders from last year as 3rd graders, 53% proficient, 85 as 4th graders, and then 67 as 5th graders last year. So just, yeah, you can kind of see the, the gist of everything where we're at. Again, our goal is always to get everybody, of course, to, to, to green, but also with that, making sure, trying to get to a point where we're, you know, above 5, 6, hopefully into the 10% jump range with that. So this is just kind of a snapshot of different things as far as where we're at as a district from an English Language Arts standpoint. Digging into specifically 5th and 6th grade, so what we did here is we took data, and this is from us returning from, from COVID in the fall of 2020. So if you're looking at like the first one, the 4th graders, that would actually be their percentages as 2nd graders, the first three, fall of '22, winter '21, spring of '21, that'd be their 2nd grade scores. The next three would be them as 3rd graders, and then the next set would be those students last year as 4th graders. So just to kind of give you some numbers, like Tony said, we are seeing some 70s, you know, from some of the classes, from some of the classrooms. The high 70s, what can we do to kind of push that, you know, to, to the 80% mark? Not only as 5th and 6th graders, but then also hoping that transition will then put them in a better spot as they're going into 7th and 8th grade. ISAP data, again, is there for us. 89% for our incoming 5th graders is a very high number. That's, that's a high achieving class. I'm going back here to our fall data, excuse me, our spring data, 85% in the, in the ISAP, or excuse me, in FAST as well, in A-reading. And then the next class, you can see our 3rd graders finished at 79%, our 2nd graders are 82%. So one of the things we're kind of having conversation-wise through this is we've got high achieving students coming in, and just want to make sure when they're leaving 8th grade, 7th grade, 6th grade, 5th grade, that we're continuing that trend. Not to say that we're not doing that right now, but we just want to increase what it is we're, we're looking at and providing our students. So with that, it's kind of led to some conversations that occurred with some different things. Through the curriculum review process, kind of our driving force was, what do we want? A consistent curriculum that is focused on improving literacy instruction, one that dives into diagnostics, has benchmarking formative assessments, can be used cross-curricular, so we're able to use those. Not only what they're learning in reading, we can also apply that to social studies, to our science as well. Focused on vocabulary, some different SEL components, close reading. Tony might have to, I'm not sure what close reading is.
Close readings? Yeah, so close reading is basically taking a passage, reading it multiple times. The first time you read it, you're going to identify vocab words maybe you don't understand as a student. And like underlining, jotting things down. Then you read it through a second time, and you identify like a phrase or a sentence that doesn't make sense to you, and then you read it the third time, and just kind of put all the pieces together of, of, you're going to read it multiple times, and each time you're going to look for something you don't know. First time, maybe words you don't know. Second time, maybe phrases you don't know. Third, we're going to hope that that comprehension comes into place, and you can answer questions based off of what you read, that you've comprehended it. So it's just repeated reading, essentially.
Also searching for something that is, of course, research-based, and then most importantly, that's recommended by the AEA. So from a support standpoint, if we do have somebody or a group of people to go to is to be able to provide some assistance with that. Our why for this is, first off, recognizing there are great things currently happening in grades 5 and 6. However, I'm looking at things, kind of finding that there is a need for a common curriculum. Honestly, I would say probably the impact that we're seeing at the elementary from Literacy Footprints, a whole-level curriculum program, same thing also with Bridges in math, is just kind of opening the doors for us on maybe taking a look at implementing this on a more consistent basis across the district. Just the next step, I guess, for us would be the 5, 6 literacy. This also would challenge students with some additional resources in addition to what they're already receiving to meet their needs, specifically the science of reading, and also correlated into long reads as well. This would provide, or we want something that would provide common formative assessments for our collaborative team discussions. And then, again, just a valuable resource that targets skill instruction to ensure mastery occurs from our reading. The close reading is one of those tasks, tactics that I'm looking forward to implement instructional-wise. Tony, anything with that? Let's kind of take over here or next on your process.
Yeah, you bet. So we started having the conversations back in May about what do we want to do with these ISAS results? What's going on in the classroom? What do we need? And through that conversation, we first started and surveyed all those teachers that teach reading. We just got their take on things of like, how comfortable do you feel with your current curriculum? Are you on board with, with looking at a different, a new curriculum? How are you feeling about, you know, the curriculum you're teaching in your class? And we had about an 85% return from the teachers that said, we're open to a new curriculum. So they're just not satisfied with what they're currently teaching. So based off of that, we reached out to the AEA and did some searching of our own to combine our two lists and got several different curriculums that we kind of generated a pros and cons list for. Then we pulled in Mrs. Huber, myself, our instructional guide, NMS, our literacy PD lead, and then our 5th grade language arts teacher and our 6th grade language arts teacher. And we kind of formed a vetting committee there to look at those different curriculums. We had a, a meeting with a publisher of Into Reading that kind of walked us through and gave us access to the Into Reading curriculum. And actually, this publisher has another curriculum called Into Literature. And I'm not going to go into too much of the differences between the two, but we did explore both of those. And through meeting with a content specialist and exploring the online digital resources, they also did send us some print resources through the months of June and July, looked through those resources, and determined that we wanted to go with Into Reading. So the, the reason we selected Into Reading, and again, we sent another survey out to all of our teachers that would be teaching this curriculum, and gave them the link to the online access, gave them the recorded video of the content specialist that we met with that walked us through the curriculum resources, and then asked them a survey again of, do you like this curriculum? And from that, we got back 100% yes. Like, if we're going to go with the curriculum, this is what we want to do. So, and the reason that our smaller committee kind of determined we wanted to go with this is, one, as we talked about before, it's going to provide us with some of that consistency across, across all of our classrooms. One of the biggest things with Into Reading is it focuses on like literacy rotations or small groups and very guided instruction or leveling our readers. And that was one thing that, coming into 5th grade, we were already switching gears to the reading-to-learn mindset. And what we discovered is we have, that's a big transition to go from 4th grade to 5th grade. And what we were realizing was, we still need to have our thumb on the reading levels of our kids so we can continue to teach the science of reading or learning how to read to the kids that are coming up. There was still a need for that. So this curriculum is going to provide us with not only the whole group instruction that we can provide, but then small group rotations. So half the period would be whole group instruction. Second half of the period is built in to rotate through small groups determined by leveled, leveling of their reading skills and providing them with guided instruction to meet the students' needs of where they're coming to us from. Another big thing that we loved about Into Reading is the common formative assessment that it has. So it has diagnostics that you can take throughout. So a lot of times, especially, you know, best example of looking at ISAS, we get that in April, and it's hard to make decisions throughout the year based off of that data. So Into Reading, what that, what this curriculum does is it provides us with diagnostics that we can give our students throughout the entire school year. So hopefully, we can respond to that data more proactively than waiting until the end of the school year when these teachers don't have these kids anymore to respond to what they need. It also has an SEL focus, and we're talking about those skills of like self-management. Huge when you get into middle school, being organized, self-management, relationship collaboration skills, working together with one another. There's a lot of collaborative components to this curriculum. There's also a Spanish version available, so if, if that is ever a major need in the future, it's an easy add to the curriculum. We did explore it, but I think we only have one student next year who's in 5th grade that is ELL. And they, they are, and they, they described it as, the Spanish version is for those that are emerging in English. So this, this learner is past that point. He knows English, knows how to speak it, how to write it, and how to read it. So we didn't add this on for this year because we didn't have a need for, to pay for it, but it is available in the future if we ever need to. Another nice thing about this is everything that's available on print is available digitally and vice versa. So we can go with digital access, and we have full permissions to print things off of there and use those print, print resources. So if we have any 504s or IEPs that say this, this person needs to have a hard copy of, of the, the curriculum, then we can easily just find it on the digital resource page, print it off, and give it to the kid, make changes to it. A lot of times, the digital resources also come in like a Word document, so they're editable. It's not going to be a PDF that's like, this is what you're stuck with. So we can tailor it and make it what's going to be best for, for our students that we have. We also, this was highly recommended by the AEA, so that was another why of why we enjoyed this curriculum. We figured we can have quick access to some support through the AEA. And Judy, she shared a PowerPoint with, with us that she gave to Ogden and the staff that she kind of introduced Into Reading to the Ogden School District staff about. So she's going to be a great resource for us as well. There's also a number of districts that are our size that are also using this. Not our size, but I think it's a, a good point to make that the entire Des Moines Valley School District is, is adopting this curriculum this next year. The, it's used by Winterset, Ogden, those are some of the closest ones that are around us. But several, several schools throughout the state are using Into Reading and seeing success from it. Another big piece of the Into Reading, we wanted to take a look at what's it look like transitioning kids to 5th grade, the kids that we get, and then after we send them out of this curriculum, what's that transition look like for our 6th graders going into 7th and 8th grade, and eventually, you know, high school and beyond. So, again, we feel like the, looking specifically at the transition from 4th to 5th grade with the literacy footprints that, that the elementary uses, our kids are going to be familiar with being leveled and using that type of small group instruction, that they'll be used to that. But we have a little bit, we have different resource options. Our plan is to continue to use the literacy footprints, but if a student is reading the same book, you know, for the third, fourth time, we feel like that's not a helpful transition for them if they're going to be repeating the same book that's not working. So Into Reading actually has some Rigby books that are the same purpose as Literacy Footprints. And I think that was also a curriculum that, correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, but did the elementary look into that too?
Yeah.
Reader's?
Yep.
So another well-known, it's not, it's not an Into Reading product, but they use Rigby within their curriculum. So it's, it's not, they, Into Reading recognizes that Rigby is a well-researched and, and well-known and results product, that they've incorporated it into their curriculum. So that's available as part of the digital subscription that we can continue to use if we run into situations where literacy footprint isn't working. So it gives us another tool in our back pocket to be able to use with our kids. One thing that we also liked about it is some enrichment that Into Reading provides. They call them book clubs. Otherwise, more commonly may be known as like literacy circles. But they provide study guides and companions for a variety of novels that are out there that if, if you're meeting grade level, this could be something that we could use, you know, even outside of our reading and writing classes within tutorial time or intervention period, learning lab, enrichment periods, that kind of thing. So a lot of cross-curriculum there. And it's a new resource, so our Into Reading will provide a new curriculum for our tier-one instruction that isn't repeated for students like the literacy footprints are. If they continue to have it, literacy footprints is good, but if they're having it for four or five years as kids continue to come up to the middle school, we want another resource that will help them with that transition. There's a lot of differentiated instruction components to it, a lot within like the small group instruction, the leveling of the readers, and it provides mastery based off of the reading skills. So again, we're back to that topic of the science of reading, teaching the skills of reading to our 5th and 6th graders and not jumping them way ahead. It'll be a nice transition to, when we get to 6th to 7th grade, where they are being expected to, to learn through the reading that they do. So this next transition of 6th to 7th and 8th grade, we hope this will improve the transition. Again, because reading to learn as opposed to learning to read. So once our, once we make sure that in our 5th and 6th grade years that our kids are leaving those two grades with the skills they need, then they're going to more easily transition to where they're expected more to, to learn through the reading that they do. They'll be better equipped with that expectation of, this is what you need to read and comprehend it because that's how you're going to learn. It also incorporates those grade-level novels that we're currently doing. So they have a list, Into Reading has a list of novels that they partner with and provide student consumables for, similar to like a study guide. But we can still continue to use the grade-level novels that we've been doing and our teachers like within this Into Reading curriculum. They tell us that the spacing between the, the curriculum, they leave, if you do all of the curriculum modules and units, there's two weeks left at the end of the year for you to be able to work in some of the grade-level novels that you want to do. So it's not just going to be a short story, long reads curriculum that 5th and 6th graders will get exposed to. We're still going to be able to do our, our grade-level novels, novel literacy circles, which again is going to prepare them for something in 8th grade because we have a heavy emphasis on, you know, reading novels as the, the older the kids get.
All right, so the financial implications here for this program. The, the total price would be $30,000, $30,173.62 for a four-year print and digital subscription, all students and teachers for 5th and 6th. That price, of course, would be locked in unless we see a huge jump in enrollment, which if we do, that's a good problem for us. So that, that could change right after that potentially, if we just have a higher jump. And that would just be due to the access that the students have. And we're saying a substantial jump. We're talking like probably 15, 20% jump in students. So, you know, 15 to 30 kids in a grade level. Which, again, if we have that, that's a good, that's a good thing for us on the whole, on a whole other side.
And right now, our incoming 5th grade class is at 86. Our incoming 6th grade class is at like 120. So there's like almost a 30 to 40 kid swing just in those two grades. So I checked on that because if that deals with like the major jump in curriculum, I want to make sure that we're anticipating any additional potential costs that might come up in the future. And she said, since you're doing Into Reading in both 5th and 6th grade, they don't care. They'll take your total number of licenses. So they're combining our 5th and 6th grade into, even though they quoted it differently, they said, we can swap licenses for the other grade level, as long as it's the same curriculum, they don't care. So there, there shouldn't be any additional expenses as long as our total number of kids with 5th and 6th grade added together doesn't go above whatever it is like 200 or whatever that total number is.
Within, and that, that's one cost. It's not 30,000 every year for four years, 30,000 for a, a four-year license. What's provided is listed there for the classroom kids. Professional development, also two options, coaching and courses, and then getting started with Into Reading will be available and accessible for the teachers as soon as possible, correct? Available for that, for them to?
The professional development?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have it penciled in for the 17th of August, so we'll get that done even before the school year starts. I, I, I pressed my teachers, like, are you sure? Like, you're ready for this? Like, we can go slower, and they all said, nope, we want this. We want to get going with it, get us trained, so we can dive right in and start using it, so.
Additional costs, we would have additional cost year one for having to print the student writing notebooks, which would be anywhere, we're guessing, between $2,000 to $5,000. So that would be added to, to year one. That's outside of the quote that's provided in the packet. In addition to that, there'd be an annual cost each year, year two, three, and four. So that will be, every single year, we'll just have that just to, as a need to have to, to print the student writing notebooks. That would, that would come directly out of our curriculum account, which we have flexibility in that to be able to, to cover that expense. Just wanted to give a quick update, just because it's going to come next year, is our SRR3, our current state. Current balance is a little bit over 60,000. Again, that must be spent by September 30th of 2024. Potential upcoming, expected SRR3 purchases slated for maybe $10,000, something like that for potential curriculum needs that might occur from now until the end of this upcoming school year. And then also an additional 10,000 for maintenance cleaning materials that Dave Cruzey has kind of indicated that there could be a need for. So essentially, of that 60,000, we only have penciled right now to spend about 20 of that. So essentially of that sixty thousand, we only have penciled right now to spend about twenty of that. Of course, our, our plan then would to use our S R three funds to be able to, to make this purchase. The invoice could be available to us immediately tomorrow if approved, so we could get the ball rolling with that. And then we would also have an A E A invoice who would do our printing for additional that two thousand to five thousand. So we'd like to use S R three funds for that also for year one. And then from next year and beyond, fiscal year twenty-five and beyond for the next three years, that two to five thousand would come out of curriculum.
Do we have any, do our printing for our student books, writing books?
For, yeah, these materials.
Okay.
We would just for a cost savings.
So it's, it's the only digital resource that is not available on print. So it's like a hundred and twenty-six pages. And to photocopy a hundred and twenty-six pages times two hundred students, it's just more cost effective to have the A E A do it. And they can bind it up for us and make it look nice, so.
Sure. And also it then won't creep into our print budget for taking, yeah, for S R, take it for curriculum instead, just a easier way to spend it. Our timeline for this, this was discussed at our SLAC meeting on June twenty-first, more so the need and potential options as opposed to specifically looking at into reading just because we weren't at that step yet. Of course, board action item today, we can get the materials order first thing tomorrow and the materials arriving organized and start P D and training for teachers from now until the day before school starts and then implement the, the first day of school on August twenty-third. You might be asking, well, how come we didn't move this earlier or have this as an item sooner in July? One thing, there was only one meeting in July and another kind of part of this also was with the new, the new law coming out and kind of going through that and anytime we're working with curriculum materials and new curriculum materials, just want to ensure that what we're getting and what we're purchasing is going to fall in line with those new regulations. Curriculum companies are kind of in a, I feel like they're in a tricky spot because they've set their programs, they set their curriculum prior to some of these laws and regulations, you know, be, be written, so it can get a little bit tricky. The good news is, is that into reading has passed all the checks for us. It's also passed all the checks for the Winterset Community School District as well. I'm not sure how much Dr. Gray has shared with different things, kind of behind the scenes that, that we've been doing. But I've been working with curriculum directors all across central Iowa, getting kind of their list of, of the new books that are going to be banned from their district procedures, and I think that's next year with our, our board policy. So I have lists from a variety of districts, over ten to be exact, of books that are on there. And none of the into reading books or into reading curriculum programs have fallen under line. And some of the districts that have been named that are currently using into reading or, or transitioning to that, they don't have any of their books listed in there, so everything checks through that procedure that we've been able to follow through on.
Yeah, and I checked with the publisher on some of those along the same lines of that. And basically what they told me is they serve fifty million students, four million educators in all fifty states. So they make their curriculum adaptable. And, you know, all of our teachers know what the, what any new law is going to be or what it is, I guess. And will be able to use that discretion and, and that adaptability to make sure we're in compliance.
So you're going to be starting this here on rollout at the end of this month. So when are you going to be in a position where you think you could be bringing back to the board? Some results, I mean, are we going to wait for the fast testing or what? How are you, how are you going to say that, hey, this is a good investment, we're seeing results with, with that story?
So yes, we're diving right in, but as far as like, we're diving right into the planning of it. But our, our plan going into the school year is we're not going to start with into reading curriculum. We're going to pull, each grade does about two, or fifth grade does two novels, sixth grade does three novels. So they're going to start the school year with one of those novels to give themselves more time to plan for the future. So I don't think we'll see it in our fall fast results. Typically, that's just our baseline screener anyways to see where our kids are at. But I would say by mid-year, we would have taken the diagnostics enough to see what the impact is. I think by the end of the year, we're, that's going to be one of the, the major markers for us to determine if we're seeing growth in our kids. And we'll put a lot of weight into the, the level of our readers through that diagnostic and how they're showing growth throughout the year.
We'll also have, yeah, we'll have a reading data, fall, winter, spring, at the end of the school year, we'll have I C A P data. We'll also have this new piece with, which Tony's kind of alluding to, this new piece of the benchmarking and tracking that we're able to kind of show where, where the students are growth that's made, impact from interventions or the diagnostics that are being implemented.
So I think you said there were two faculty in seventh and eighth grade that do the reading instruction as opposed to like four or five, fifth or sixth, is that two per grade level or two total?
Two total, right?
Two total. Two and seventh, two and eighth.
Two and, okay. Do they collaborate more amongst themselves on the reading instruction more so than the lower levels? To, to kind of maybe, to, to come to more of a consensus on what they're teaching? I guess where I'm, where I'm going with this is, do you think that this is going to be a model that we want to carry forward to seventh and eighth grade eventually? If the data pans out?
I think if we have data that shows that our students are not learning, we'll look at, and we find success in this curriculum, we'll explore it as something that we, that we look into. Right now, we, like our biggest gain, gain that we had in green that we showed earlier was in seventh grade. So at this point, we don't necessarily see that there's a need to do five-eight curriculum, but certainly I'd be open to exploring something if what we're currently doing isn't working.
So fifth and sixth is kind of a pilot right now and we'll see how that, how the data responds and maybe, maybe not.
Yep.
Let me show my age here a little bit. When you talk about novels.
Yeah.
Are you talking about a, a book that a kid holds in his hand and takes home with his backpack and all that?
Yep. Yep, whole grade novel, we call it. So like, for example, the sixth grade reads Boy in the Striped Pajamas, so.
Great book.
What's that?
Great book.
Yep. So that's a, that's a physical book that each kid gets a copy of and they read it together as a class and, and, and study it together. And do some branch out projects based off of that topic and like social studies. But so we're still able to do those whole grade novels that we've really enjoyed and our students have enjoyed and books that we know are good. What into reading is going to give us what we haven't had as much of is those poems, those longer reads, those short stories that we can do some of the closed reading to and, and really dive into the text of, of what our kids are getting compared to like, just, not that it was just novels that we did, but we had a heavy, heavy emphasis on the novels and then really short reading passages. So this is going to give us some more of those longer reads and text resources that we feel like we're missing.
For a child that just devours books, does this curriculum give them the opportunity to get ahead? Just to can, to get to the point that they're with a class, but then they can just continue to go past?
Yeah, so those book clubs that they call them, that'd be a great example of, of kids that during the, the small group rotations, they don't need to meet with the teacher to, to practice the skills that they're still developing. If they already have them, then they have these book clubs set up where they can, in small groups, maybe two to three kids, read a novel together, as the name implies, book club. Can I answer your question?
Are those comparative groups then based, are they, are they based off of the leveling then that's taking place?
Yep, they can be, yep.
So essentially the, yeah, the higher level books would be skill level appropriate, yeah, for the kids. So they're reading, you know, maybe a W and a Y level as opposed to T or U.
So within this into reading curriculum, are there, is there flexibility as to what novels are available in this curriculum? Or, you know, some flexibility to choose, pick and choose some? I mean, what I'm trying to get at or what I'm thinking of is, you know, the new legislation that went into effect July one. Obviously still waiting to see how that's going to be implemented and, and any guidance we might get from the state in that regards. You don't really know what exactly is going to happen. So what I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, is there room to be flexible, to pivot? If some of these materials should turn up to be not compliant with the new laws? Or we're just kind of stuck with what we've got?
We would pull them.
Yeah.
If they're compliant, we would.
Do we have something else that we can slide into that, that fits the curriculum?
Yeah, we, I mean, we would have our current curriculum that we've been using, that our teachers could dust off and use. But this.
It would fit right in with.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I think what we're, we would be missing and we need to spend some more time searching for is some of those longer read passages. But the, the thing about the digital access to this curriculum is it's not a textbook that you're given. So it's not like, here's your thick textbook. And if there's something in that textbook that doesn't comply with the law, we have to take the whole textbook out. It's not like that. With the digital access, everything is broken up in modules and everything is pieced literally like activity by activity. So it's very adaptable and flexible as, as you were asking, to be able to pick and choose units. And that was actually a reason why we like this curriculum as well. Because we didn't want a, a curriculum where we're turning the next page, okay, next page, onto the next page. Today we're starting on page thirty-two. We wanted a curriculum that we could tailor to our kids. And, and like those facts that I, statistics I told you earlier, where fifty million students use this curriculum, they, they, they share that and they understand that along the lines of that many users that use it, you know, our learner is not going to be the same as someone that's in New York City. So they, they make this curriculum to be adaptable and flexible. So you can pick the passages that you want, skip the passages you don't want, and the kids don't know any different just because it's all digital access that you can pick and choose the different modules and units and activities that you want to use.
Yeah, thanks. Any further questions? It is an action item, so we are going to need to move it tonight to get it started. I think it's a worthy expense, considering they're federal dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school curriculum purchase into reading for grades five and six, four-year print and digital subscription.
No, I think you got it. It's just.
Do you want to melt?
Just maybe to use S R also. Yeah, we just tag in this, the fun extreme is the federal S R dollars.
The total cost.
No, 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 that's just, no, people might read minutes, might listen to the meeting.
And I, we'll have to submit it to Brian, right?
Okay, now, no, here's where you sculpted.
Put on the end of that motion, at the, at the total cost indicated in our board packet, thirty thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion in a second to approve the middle school curriculum reading purchase as presented to the board tonight in the amount so described. Any further questions of administration or amongst the board? Hearing none, all in favor? Bye, closed. Good luck, Tony. Thank you for coming on in tonight.
Yeah.
Joey, what's left of your summer?
Summer's gone.
Summer's gone.
Yes.
Glad to be back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My point two, I will turn this over to you, Doctor, because this is in the news and now it's in our meeting.
Yeah, so the, the policy updates here, I don't, I think everything is the exact same from the last meeting. I don't think there's anything new that's being presented or being looked at. Of course, the book one is kind of the big one that's gotten everybody's attention. Our policy is following exactly what I A S, I A S B recommended. From my understanding, what other districts are, are implementing as well. We're a little dark, of course, on some of the things, right? Or we're just going to have to learn as we go. But that's kind of the case a lot of the time, you know, when there's new policies, new laws that are, that are being implemented. Good thing is, I feel like we're ahead of the, the curve that's coming, prepared for it and ready to implement these policies and collaborating not only with our admin, our teachers, but then also other districts as well because they're in the same space.
Yeah, it's okay to stay out of the news, Urban Dale can take that lead. Yeah, the, the tricky part is, is of course going through material that you currently have and making a decision on where it stands. My worry, my career is worry, I think I don't want to speak for him, but in our conversation, my biggest worry is getting into potentially, or this opens the door to situations where if we're talking a book specifically, it could be okay to read it in one district, but it could be banned in another.
True statement, it does not co give the individual districts that land to.
What's that? It does, yes, that's what I'm saying. So a book could be okay in District X, but could not be in District Y based off of their interpretation.
District X has got something they approve, maybe District Y might not be some point correct.
Or might not view it the same way. I think we're wise and we tend to do how we serve, so, yep. And we've always focused on, first off, doing what's best for students and second, always coming back to the notion of we're here to teach kids how to think, not what to think. Jump in, jump. Yep, there's a specific.
As comfortable as I can be at this point, I mean, like you said, it, it's all fluid right now.
Yep. Clearly if something changes in D E A guidance, or D E, D E A, D E guidance, it'll just come back to us to re-adopt or reconfigure, so. You got other things to worry about?
We do.
So through the review, hypothetical question out there, through, through the review of the materials, if a piece of literature is deemed to not be consistent with policy and not then available for the child to, to check out or read, what if they get it on YouTube or, or through other means on the one-to-one device?
So if they, like, let's say it's a book.
And, or they just get PDF of it, I shouldn't have said YouTube, they just get PDF of it somehow.
And they're viewing it on a school device? Good question. So I, this is just my guess, is that it's actually not being provided to them by the district. There isn't a hard copy of it available on the.
There isn't a hard copy of it available on the district. There isn't. Yeah, it's not being, it's not part of a purchase that we have. So I would kind of correlate that potentially to a student watching a video, you know, on a, on a device.
Which is why I think I went to YouTube, by the way, because-
Right, right, yeah. But that, if that happens like that, wouldn't, the video part doesn't necessarily fall back on district and fall back, it falls back on the student and their use of the device. So, yeah, that'd be something we could discuss, right? Like, if a book is pulled from our shelves and student accesses, access the student on PDF, what that process looks like, and my guess would be a conversation with your parents. But it's also, again, on the other side, it's tricky because we're not actually providing it to them, they're just accessing it.
Same as them accessing another piece of information on their device that gets through the school's filters.
Right, right, so, yeah.
And we're not providing it.
We're not.
No firewalls, a lot of content out.
Right.
But once again, when you use the example of, okay, it's, okay, it's good on that side of the fence, but it's not good on this side of the fence, it's just more of a community decision. Does not mean it's not available, as Leanne had said, in a larger public domain.
I mean, you could go, you could go another, another route and it could. Maybe there is a book that is banned and we're not giving it to students. However, the student wants to read it during their choice time and their parents have purchased it for them. Do we tell them, no, you can't bring that book in during your free reading time? Feels like the way-
That would be something I would ask-
Feels like the way the policy is written is specifically to what we're providing students.
You're referring to like a hard copy of the material?
What's that, sir?
You're referring to like a hard copy of the material?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, first of all, property to bring to the school. You have to identify it first and then, second of all, I don't know, you have to expose it.
It'd be really tricky to say, no, that book's not allowed for you to bring in.
Oh, I hate to get it down to that level, that's pretty granular. But, you know, if you have something that's clearly defined as not, and you allow it into the district, at some point, don't you own the access? If there is access allowed?
Access to their personal property? Well, yeah.
Personal property could be, a lot could fall into the personal property that we don't permit, you know, consumption. Just say, this, we're really, we're deep in the weeds on this one, we can't even see the real-
Yeah, I think that's a, that's something that's going to potentially come out of this, you know, because that's going to happen.
Well, you've got to figure that out.
There's going to be a district that's going to ban a book and a student is either going to protest it or whatever and bring their own copy of the book.
Yeah. And they'll find a way to get this material at some point, again, with their own devices anyway, so.
Right.
It's not for us to control.
Is that a damn Bigfoot movie with Danson?
Sounds familiar.
So we're talking about our own version of Footloose here, aren't we?
Remake, twenty twenty three.
But I think really the intent of it is for us to be providing material and us to be providing access through our libraries, through purchases that either a teacher's making or that us as a district are making.
Right, right.
Yeah, the whole concept and the way we talk about this amongst each other and in the news of talking about banning books, you know, just the words that we use kind of bothers me, right? Because we can, just because it's not provided as part of our curriculum or in our library, doesn't mean it's banned.
Right.
There's countless other sources where, where a student can get anything they want. Whether through the public library, you know, a paper book, an electronic book, and, you know, any books that they read on their tablet or their, or their, any device that they have. They can purchase it on Amazon and, so.
I would-
Absolutely, there's a lot to be worked out and, and challenged on this yet and, but, you know, I agree with, kind of the way Cody's looking at it, your perspective, is that we've got to, you know, we can control what we can control.
The laws in front of us.
And continue to be level-headed, right?
I would only hope that we don't internally seek to be overcome by the vapors while we're pearl-clutching over a book. And because the thing is, I would, and this was offered up to me and I didn't, I thought about, this is a nice metric, the fact that would, how would the board feel if a book and the content therein with pictures as shown? Would they be comfortable having that content read to the board in open meeting? Would those pictures be permissible as distributed through the course of a board meeting? And when it gets, gets to be wince-worthy, maybe that's where you find the pinch point. And I would quote Thurgood Marshall, one of the better justices we've had in the Supreme Court in my lifetime. I'm thinking it was the late sixties when they were actually trying to adjudicate pornography as it was coming into a more of a public domain. Said, "I can't necessarily define it for you, but I know it when I see it." And maybe that's just what it comes down to.
And this is a action item? Yeah, I think all the new policies that are vested that we're educating with here shortly, as we are in August.
So the, the, um, the authorization for asthma, asthma, all those parental authorizations. What, spit it out, Leanne, I know. What parents and guardians sign during registration, do they need to go back and re-sign them? Are they part of the registration packet?
What are you, can you give me-
A page you remember to look at.
Well, let me tell you, because I'm looking at last month's-
Looks like twenty-nine. Page twenty-nine, code five oh seven, twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-nine is the, one of the ones. So that second, that very first statement, in accordance with applicable laws, students with asthma, that's all new language. But I honestly don't remember during registration.
Yeah, so the way that I'm reading this is that this is for students to be able to self-administer-
Yeah.
-medication, right? The school shall permit self- Yeah. I'm guessing anybody that would want to fall under that, we'd have to probably resend this consent form. Or have that available.
You understand what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't believe that it was a, it's a check on registration currently. And even if it were to be, they would still have to, like, just checking it, I don't believe would satisfy this just because of, you know, it's very specific.
Yeah, because you check-
Due to the medication, the dosage, when they're taking it, the prescriber's signature, it looks like is on, so there's just a lot of, it, it feels like, I don't think I can really think of the top part of it, it would be like a physical that a student has to, you know, complete, like, through registration, we just don't, you can't click a button and says, I've completed physical and put the date in. This feels like a form that would have to be completed for students to be able to fall under this category. It does say electronic signatures meet the requirement for some of these. Electronic document that could be sent out potentially.
Just think the registration, you just select.
Yeah.
The child, they love to give themselves, or I don't know the exact language, but-
Yeah.
And self, or self-medicate.
Guessing some of those might not fall under this too specifically. Policies, yeah. Questions about? There's a lot. I'll move approval of the ISBA policy updates as presented in the second final reading in five point two of our board packet.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the second reading of the IASB policy updates as found in the board agenda tonight and as discussed earlier and in our past meeting. Any last concerns or any observations you wish to share? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here you go, Doctor. Six point one, consent agenda.
Whenever the board is ready for an explanation of the list of bills, I can provide it, it's not a year when-
The only one would be the personnel. Just an update on that.
Is that Lori here? No, Lori left.
Yeah, the, leave adder middle name, so the high school guidance administrative assistant appointment, made it to Paige Aaron's instead of Amanda Aaron's. And that is, it does reflect her recommendation for higher form, which is on page eighty-one. Yeah, correct names there.
So we buy jackets for the girls' wrestling program? Eight seventy-four. Upper third. Yes. Athletic activity budget. Suppose, I'm guessing just for, I'm just not sure, I mean, it's a new program. If you're not going to have a lot laying around on the shelf, we did have a fair amount of success.
Playground mulch is a more significant investment than I would, might have imagined.
Yeah.
Is that typical for, for a year or, I mean, driving by the elementary, it looked like a, maybe a little more maintenance than typical.
Yeah, they dug up, they dug up a bunch of it because they were replacing some of the playground equipment. That is one of those, we looked really hard when we first put down that matting as far as putting more. So we would kind of get away from doing just that number on a regular basis. And there's a, you know, you have the fall of the ground, you have water flowing it and there's some, the city's got something as far as storm guttering. There's just, a lot of things work against us doing anything different.
Dug by that last night, the elementary playground area. I, I meant to drive slow and look, look at it, see how it survived the torrential downpours yesterday. I didn't notice, but.
Yeah, well, some of that's old, that padding's fifteen years old, that padding. A lot of kids have transferred that.
Boy, there was a lot of, a lot of dirt being dug up there and piles of mulch. I mean, it was, it was impressive here a few days ago, like, wow.
Anybody else see anything they want to ask about or talk about?
I hadn't noticed until Joe mentioned the playground mulch, but just above that, the go-to-distance baseball game rental venue. So did we rent the new North Pope? Is that the North Pope movie site thing?
No, that's actually Dyersville.
That's Dyersville, okay. What's going on there?
Little dreams next year, baby, I want to go. Oh, we are?
Really? Playing?
On the movie set.
Awesome, I didn't know that. Thought that was maybe the new North Pope thing that they were-
Maybe I should, I let that cat out of the bag.
Yeah, sorry, maybe I should.
You never mentioned that already too. Let's just blame Tom.
Actually, Brian, let it off.
So are they, so are they looking at the movie site or the MLB site that they?
The movie set.
Movie set, cool. An exhibition or like an actual game?
Actual game?
Huh.
Who are we playing?
I don't know.
Yeah, do you know, you're just not saying, or you just don't know?
I don't know.
All right.
You know Coach Glenn, if you're around him much, you know he's got, he's always got-
Yeah.
Something up his sleeve.
All right.
They'll get to walk out of the cornfields as they are introduced.
Well, we got cornfields they can practice on right across the road.
Yeah. Practice the walk or practice, practice.
How do you play a real game there with, you know, no fences and-
Right.
Go back to-
Stand a lot of rules.
Yeah. Like playing in Maxwell, you hit it in the woodpile, it's a-
Yeah.
Ground rule triple.
Yep. Huh. Not, I don't-
He's got a couple of special root trips.
Thanks.
Little trips next season, I know, we're all working on it.
Oh, sorry to ruin that.
Try to act surprised when it comes up.
Yep. Hopefully the two or three people that are watching aren't going to spread it.
Yeah, hi, Joe.
Okay, we're safe then.
And once again, we have a fistful of fundraisers. I mean, has anybody noticed that running trend that we just always see that fundraiser?
It's not a bad thing.
No, it's not, but it's just like, you would think it would ebb and flow and you just don't not see fundraisers.
We almost need to hire a full-time fundraiser.
Well, the city road's going to be available, or open here, you know, they were talking at the foundation meeting last two, Wednesday, that I think occupancy was like the end of November. Is that what you're hearing, Mr. Meyer?
They hope so.
Yeah.
As long as the concrete cares.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what Tim was saying, it's just like, that's the real rub. So. Well, if anyone's got, we need just to approve it, so if anyone's got anything, let's approve it.
I move approval to consent agenda.
Thank you, Leanne.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the consent agenda for tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven point one, board member comments.
Things were looking pretty ugly for a little while yesterday around the neighborhood here. And I was impressed with all the flooding. And I was impressed with how, uh, how quickly it resolved itself. I don't know if you've talked to Dave, you're aware of anything?
I hadn't heard anything. I talked to him real quick, but he didn't mention anything. I just saw pictures of the parking lot out here.
Our little problem area there on the west side of the middle school came out okay. So there were, we were here, we were at the high school commons for the baseball end of the year thing, and, uh, it was right up to the bottom of the doors and some vehicles that were parked close to the building. But then, you know, we came out later in the evening. It is like nothing had happened all around town.
Was that dry? It's, yeah, a lot of that is just how dry it was.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of that's how dry it was, but our, of course, I didn't see the whole city, but the, you know, the storm service system, everything seemed to be working as it should, you know, in the long term. I mean, it was happening, it was pretty ugly, but it's nice to hear that, or not hear that anything happened around here with our school facilities.
Looking forward to the Cubs playing football again.
Yeah, they're out practicing.
Yeah. Kind of getting spoiled and having good teams here after your-
It's a good thing.
I know, it's a great thing, but it's just like, it's not an easy thing to do. So I know you know, but you saw the, uh, the dead lifting, you know, get up in the bar. Imagine that being a problem, uh- When you got here, when you got here, Cody, it wasn't a problem.
It's like, I mean, that's-
Stinks on the structure, but- You know, we can mitigate that, but it's just like that is a measure, a true measure of the strength athletes that you've got rolling through the system.
Do we have a, an assessment from, from the engineer yet or?
You know about anything?
I don't.
Yeah, because Dave was going to reach out or Steve had contacted a couple of structuralists. Yeah, I'm sure when he's gets, when he's got something, he'll bring it back, but. Well, if nothing else, check the calendar there. We're back to a regular schedule, two meetings a month. So your summer's over.
I will not be here for the October second meeting. I'll let Dr. Gray know that too.
Okay, October second.
October second.
Well then, that said, good meeting, very informable, or informational, informational. Look forward to seeing what Tony gets out of this coming year on our reading side, because that has always been a flat spot in the middle school. When we step out of success in the elementary and then we hit the middle school, it just kind of lays down. And I like to think maybe they identified something or a means to get the progress. So we take a motion to adjourn if everybody is so inclined.
We'll adjourn.
Motion in the second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everybody. Good meeting. Thank you for everybody that watched.
Both of you.